Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session for September 21st, 2017. This is a rescheduled meeting to de-conflict with the school fall break that's coming up next week. So this is to take the place of the September 26th meeting next Tuesday. I don't see any elected officials, but welcome all of you here. Thanks for being here and make sure you bring up the situation and speak. Thank you. And turn off your cell phones if you will. It's such a privilege always to have Pastor Corey Franklin in the house. And if you have a chance to go visit his church, his house of God out on Mount Olivet Road Baptist, at Mount Olivet Baptist Church, you'll certainly be blessed. So Corey, thanks for leading us in the prayer and the invitation and the pledge.
Well, good morning, everyone. Let us bow for a word of prayer. Our Father and our God, we thank you this morning that we're able to come before you just to say thank you. Lord, we thank you that you are our God who allows your children to come to you any time of the day, morning, noon, or night, when you will hear our cries. Lord, as we sit over here this morning, Heavenly Father, we pray right now that over every elected official, from the White House to this very room, Lord, you will bless them with wisdom and oh, and bless your people with patience. Because you are our holy God, Heavenly Father, we ask right now, Lord, that you take charge over our actions and our attitudes. And though we might not always agree with one another, Lord, we pray that we never become disagreeable. Lord, we thank you right now that you continue to bless Paulding County, Heavenly Father. Lord, we want Paulding County to be a county lord there with all those around the world. Look at Paulding County. They know that you are here. Lord, right now, we ask a special prayer of protection over our first responders, dear God. Lord, watch over each and every one of them as they protect us, Lord, as we slumber and sleep. Lord, we pray right now, Heavenly Father, that funds and monies will be found, Heavenly Father, to adequately equip them, Lord, that they might be efficient and effective in the work that they do, Heavenly Father. Lord, that as they're out there patrolling the streets, Heavenly Father, they don't have to worry about how they're going to feed their families, Lord, but they can concentrate on the job that they were hired to do. Lord, we thank you for our military, Heavenly Father, and our armed services, dear God. Lord, we thank you for every veteran that has served, Heavenly Father. And Lord, we ask a special prayer over all of those people that have been impacted, Lord, by the hurricanes and earthquakes, dear God. Lord, watch over them, Lord, and give us a heart of compassion, Lord, that we might send, Heavenly Father, different elements that they need, Lord, to get back on the road of recovery. And Lord, we thank you right now that we live in a country, Heavenly Father, Lord, that is second to none. And America is not perfect, dear God, but there's nowhere else we'd rather live. But this is still the home of the prey and the land of the free. And Lord, we thank you that you watch over us each and every day. So watch over this meeting, Heavenly Father. And when it's all settled down, Lord, when we leave this room, remind us, Heavenly Father, that we are all united, Lord, in your love, that we all are citizens of Paulding County. And Lord, for this we are most thankful. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen. Let's do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Franklin. That was beautiful. Looks like we only have four commissioners up here, but we really have five. Just our commissioner is invisible today. And we'll see if he can check in with us. Are you there, Ron? Count to five. We're getting the mic of Justin.
One, two, three, four, five.
What's the square root of 144? We got you loud and clear. Thanks for being here. Thanks for all the work you've done. I'll let you comment on that in just a second. We do have minutes for the September 12th, 2017 work session. And the September 12th meeting minutes also there available for your review. Under announcements, so we do have a short video that highlights why there's some cowboys in the room.
Paulding County Department is very excited to announce a new partnership that we have made with Mr. Al Walker in the town of Wyon. We will be here in October for Cowboy Day. And I really want Al to tell you a lot about the history of Cowboy Day, how it came to be, and how much it means to him.
Well, we're located off of Benson Road, about a mile back in the woods on the property. I guess in 2008, we done our first Cowboy Day. Had a few friends and everybody come over. And we lacked as much, we done it the next year, and then we started building the town. My brother helped me. If it was that him, I couldn't have done it. We built the town like 1800s. We got a saloon, we got a jail, barber shop, undertaker, bank.
It's a great place to come out and visit. I know Shug Buck Hall just opened a little over your gale. It's just a beautiful facility that's been used by many of the community. Al was so gracious, he donated it for nonprofits to use, for fundraisers, as well as, I know you've been hosting a lot of local weddings, receptions, and parties out there. So tell us a little bit about the skits. That's what I was so surprised by the first time I ever came out to Cowboy Day.
Our skits are like limestone. We do a documentary on Wild Bill Hickok called Billy Kidd. We have bank robberies, Bad Girls. It just, the list just goes on and on. There's about 30 in the cans, and cowboys, cowgirls, and cowkids. And we have a stick horse race for the kids, and the kids get to keep their stick horses. On Cowboy Day, we recognize all veterans. I've done a tour in Vietnam with the First Cavalry Division. The guys that I was in service with, we started having a reunion seven years ago. And now, they're coming, they've been coming to Cowboy Day from California, New Mexico, New Jersey, South Georgia, United States. Bring a chair, and we furnish eats and the drinks, cokes and water, and all that transportation down to the town. And it's a good thing.
Please come see what's in your own community. It's definitely a hidden gem, and we're excited for the tourism effects that this has happened on Paulding County. Al has always been so gracious, keeps the event at only $10 for an entire carload. Rain or shine, bring your chairs. Don't forget, it's October 7th. Cowboy Day, time and thank you, Al.
Yeah, that's it.
Thought Tony Crowe would be dancing to that little number there. We are excited to have in the house Al Walker himself, who might tell us a little bit more. Al, I'd love to have you come up or stand where you are, whatever's your pleasure. Just thanks for being here. We had an area meeting luncheon out at Wyon last week, and it was just a lot of fun and just an exceptional place to have any event.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank God for all his blessings. And I appreciate y'all coming out last week and the surrounding communities to have the luncheon out there. I was honored that this, you know, I didn't expect this, you know. I was in here crying. And this thing is, it's just gross and much, and it's just all good. You just have to be there to absorb it, you know. And I'm proud. I'm just, I didn't know this could do this. It makes me feel good anyway. It's, anyway, we got Cowboy Day coming up. Two weeks from Saturday, it'll be October the 7th. And this'll be our 10th year, so we looking for a big turnout. And Chambers helping us out with everything, and I'm just proud of it. So if you can make it out and bring kids, and you ain't got to be a kid to join in the horse race. You'd be, I got plenty of horses, so. Come out and just enjoy it. And I'm just so proud of it. And I thank y'all for inviting me out. And y'all showed my tree on this right here. I didn't know this was coming.
And on the screen, you put that back up. Recognize the cowboy in the middle?
I didn't know they was going to do this to me. I look like festival.
And on the right side of there is Jackson, Al's brother. So tell him hello for us. And normally, we have more people than this, but this is an off-scheduled meeting, so it's not the normal kind. That's not a good part of it. So we're also very proud of our fire department and Chief Helfery and his team, pretty large team. And with the emergency weather that's been happening all over Florida and Georgia, I'd like the Chief Helfery to come up and talk about our contributions to the Georgia Search and Rescue Team. So thank you.
Good morning. The three individuals still there, Robert Eaves, Chris Bevout, and Brandon Maple. They're on the GSR team, which is the Georgia Search and Rescue Task Force team. It's a 35-member team that responds to disasters from anywhere across the state or the United States. They actually were supposed to be deployed to Houston, and they had so many resources that they ended up not having to reach all the way across to Georgia to get them there. But they did deploy to Hurricane Irma. They went to Camden County. Some of the things, that was on Sunday, September the 10th is when they were deployed. They returned by Wednesday. But some of the things they did, they did search a lot of subdivisions that were surrounded by water, had to search homes. A lot of people did not evacuate. And they also took our Zodiac rescue boat, and they were in charge of searching boats, believe it or not, because people actually wanted to stay on their boats in the hurricane. So they did search about 30 boats. One of the things that's kind of interesting, they did not have to rescue anybody while they were on duty, but they had about four hours downtime. So they decided to go by land to look at the river in St. Mary's, where they were charged with the search and rescue. And they actually had to rescue a man that was trapped on a dock, and he jumped off the dock to swim towards them. And he was going out to the intercoastal waterway. So they had to rescue him. So they said, we were on vacation and relaxing. We end up having to rescue somebody, and we did do it while we were actually on duty. So I thank God that had something to do with that itself. We're very proud of them, proud of everybody that works for us. But these guys have a commitment with this team. They have a lot of requirements that they have to meet to stay on this team, disciplines that they have to meet. So very proud of them. Proud of all of our other, you know, we were preparing here thinking that we were going to get some storms and all here, and I'm very proud of personnel. We got a good plan together, all the department heads that got their people over to the EOC it real well. And very proud of everybody that took part in that.
Can you do a standing ovation to the picture?
I didn't want to mention, we do get federal funding for this, so we'll be reimbursed for their time. Like I said, they did take our rescue boat, which was the first time it was ever used for that. And so we did get paid for all that, so we do get reimbursement for it, so it's not all the county stuff. All that's the right thing to do anyway, but we do get our money back.
We don't have a long meeting this morning. Would there be any questions from the audience to Chief Helfery? I don't know if that's out of order or not. Who cares? Now, it's a pleasure to introduce somebody that I talked about 10 days ago at the first meeting on the 12th. Told you about her resume, but now she's here in person and actually been working all week. It's Ms. Angela Ferris. She has an undergrad degree from Bernal in public administration and then an MBA from the same university. She worked with IBM for 14 years, working in contracts and training, and has a broad background there to pass on to us. She worked with the Chattahoochee Technical School here for four years in their Economic Development Unit. So I just feel like it's been a great catch to have Angela come onboard. She's got a lot of energy and personality, and I think she'll just be a great asset to Paulding County staff. You want to stand up and say?
I don't think you want me to do that. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it, so thank you so much.
She was with us last week at Wyon for lunch. It was a good day.
Very good day.
Now, I wanted to give Commissioner Davis, who's hopefully still on the line, a couple minutes to tell us what he's been doing down in Central Florida. You still there, Ron?
Yeah, I'm here. Thanks, Dave. I won't go into a lot of detail here. I've brought, you know, last meeting, just kind of made a last minute announcement that I was going to pack up and break some stuff to Florida. I've set up a state of family in Kissimmee, which is just south of where I live. Brought a truck with the stuff down. It's been, this is a great story and all of this, but it's been multiplied several times over. And I am driving, we're driving every day about two hours south to a little town called Sebring, working with a church here who is currently the only food shelter in county. Putting the stuff that came from Paulding County, we put it directly in the hands of people who are without food or water. And there's, there's no way to explain the emotion when you show up on someone's doorstep with a gallon of water and they break into tears when they see you. It's quite a humbling experience. So things are going well here in Sebring, and I appreciate the opportunity on the meeting today, on the call. And I'll be here through the rest of the week, and we'll be home probably late, late Sunday night.
Well, we're glad to have you onboard, voice wise.
And I will say, I will also say that the folks here at Sebring, when we showed up with the water and all the supplies, the percent, they've just been overwhelmed in the business of people Paulding County. And they're, I told them they all have a good place to come and get away now, because the next time they're here, I told them to come, Paul, come evacuate up the Paulding. And they made the next to do it. So if that hurricane is down, those that make the turn to the west, they'll be ready for it.
Well, thanks for all your work down there. Kind of represent the whole county by being there. I noticed you linked up with Commissioner, so that's positive also, I guess. All right, well, under invited guests, I haven't met Ms. Reva Burks, so is that still good?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry I didn't talk to you beforehand, I apologize, but she's the executive director of Helping Hands. She's going to give an overview of their services. Thanks for being here.
Great morning, everyone. My name is Reva Burks, and I'm the executive director of Helping Hands, as you just said. And I just wanted to just give you a brief overview of what we do at Helping Hands. Excuse me, we're a nonprofit charitable ministry. And what we do is feed hungry people who need it. And we've been an existence for about 30 years here in Paulding County. And we're a coalition of churches. It was like five churches that actually started Helping Hands 30 years ago. And they had folks that would come during the Wednesday night Bible study needing help, but they didn't have the, the folks there didn't have the means to do it. So thus, they got together and started Helping Hands. So we're open five days a week for, between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00 for volunteers. And folks come there for food in between the hours of 9:30 and 2:30. We, our goal is just to feed the hungry folks here in Paulding County. We have a program specifically for seniors. Atlantic Community Food Bank came up with some statistics last year that was out of 2014 study that says one in 10 seniors live in poverty. One in four children go to bed hungry every night because they don't have enough food to eat. So we're just trying to capture the folks that we have here in Paulding County that are hungry. They said 14% of our people here in Paulding County go to bed every day, or every day, and don't have enough food to eat. And that's about 20,000, almost 21,000 people here in the county. So we have food that's donated by different stores here in the area that we pick up food from. That would be Walmart, and Target, and Kroger, and Publix. We have pickups from those guys that donate their food. We call it Food Rescue Program. So we get those items from them. We also have donations from individuals such as yourself and individuals from churches. And that is our main thing. We need to get more money into Helping Hands. It costs a lot to run five days a week and six hours a day, even longer than that because we're there longer sometimes. Costs a lot of money to run that place. And we're actually the largest food pantry and clothing closet here in Paulding County out of about six, five or six of us. And it costs some money to run it. So I pay a life bill anywhere between $600 and $800 a month just to keep things rolling and going there. And we just need help. And the best way to help us is to help us financially. If you give to us financially, I can actually use some of the money to go out and purchase food at the Atlantic Community Food Bank and pay about 18 cents on a dollar for that food. You get excited about going to Kroger and getting 10 for 10, maybe 10 cans of tuna for $10, and I can get 48 cans of tuna for $3.42. So it's a difference. Your money will go much further when you give it to us versus going to the grocery store yourself. Now, you can do that. We accept any and all donations. Bring it over there to us, and we'll be glad to do that. But the money goes further when we purchase it ourselves from that particular agency. Another thing I wanted to tell you about is that we always have a need for volunteers. It doesn't matter how many hours you give to us, whether it's one hour or five hours, whether you want to stay all day or you just want to do like a pickup for us. We have a program where we donate items to children in elementary school. And our guys take it over there to the elementary schools. We had one guy, I think it was about a year ago, a year and a half ago, he would come on his lunch break and pick up the food to take back to his elementary school. It was a big help for us. So even if you could just come out and do a pickup for us, go to one of the stores to pick up, or if you wanted to come in and work in the pantry for a couple hours, that would be fine too. We always have a need for that. Have a need for working for case managers if you want to work upstairs or answer the phones for an hour. Or when we have our fundraisers, if you know any organizations or if you know any businesses or companies that could donate to us, getting those donations for us so that we can sell in our silent auction will generate funds as well. So we're just trying to make more, just make you more aware of what we're doing over there and have you guys to actually give to us. Or if, you know, even if you know someone that works for a company, if you don't have the time to come over and volunteer, or the time, or the financial means to give to us, if you know anyone that works in the food industry, or if you know anyone that works in the manufacturing industry, get in contact with them, tell them what we do, and maybe we can go to them and get items. You know, it could be a paper company, and they may make toilet paper. We can use those items. Or someone that works for a company that you know that they have community grants. We can go ahead and apply for those community grants if you work for that type of company or if you know of any in the area. Coordination wide, we can do that as well. So we just need your assistance in just getting us out there, getting our name out there, and having folks to help us, because it takes a lot of money to run the place. Any questions for me?
I don't have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a statement. We have several of the volunteers here today.
Yes, sir.
Would y'all stand up, please, just to be recognized? I know they don't do this to be recognized. Join me, come get up. I'm a guy that's real reluctant to just take money out of my pocket and give to charities because I don't know where it goes. I've been by Helping Hands several times. One morning, I went by, I was going to help a little bit, but Paul Taylor said, "Get out of the way." So I must have been hindering and not helping. But they go through the process of looking at these people before they, I'm sure if you walked in the door, they'd give you something to get you by. But in order just to, for them to come in and get food and stuff, they really take a close look. And I appreciate y'all doing that, and I appreciate what you're doing so much. I consider it good about Helping Hands.
Thank you, thank you so very much.
Ms. Burks, we are having discussion and dialogue regarding our budget. Conversation with Paul, we got started a little bit late, but we hope to continue to review and be able to contribute.
Well, thank you so very much. I appreciate your time here. I appreciate you inviting me. I read something, it's been a while ago, but it actually said, "Those who can do," and "those who can do more, volunteer." So we're welcome for you guys to come up and help us over there at any time, and we appreciate your time here today. Thank you so much.
Under bid awards, we have none. Under reports from committees and departments, we have none. We have public participation on agenda item number four by Mr. Wayne McColl.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Y'all are probably not going to like me when I get done, but that's all right. We like you at, thank you. This is our number four. I've been looking at this, and I've checked out what the pay scale is on this particular job. It can range between $94,173,000 a year. I personally, as a taxpayer of this county, feel we're already taxed to death and spending money on stuff that we're not even supposed to have in the county that were voted down by voters. Why does the county and its taxpayers need to pay this kind of money to get help for an elected official that was elected to do the job that this county's ministrator is going to be doing? To me, it's not right. It's not right on the tax. Our taxes are steadily going up. Of course, our school board is robbing us every year, but I understand that. And I'm still trying to figure out what they need to involve the money they give. But I would ask this board right now to stop this if they can. I mean, like I said, we have elected officials that get paid to do this same job. And I think it's going to be just another burden on the taxpayer to pay two men to do the same job. And I personally don't feel that it's right. And I'm hoping this board will work this out where it won't be on the backs of the taxpayers, because that's where the money's going to come from, the taxpayer. We spend too much now on taxes. We've been, well, I won't go before we're spending a lot of money on taxes. But I would like to see this board maybe even turn this nomination down. And I would like to see this board try to work out something that will be a little cheaper than what the amount's going to be paid by here to this, whoever gets this job. Then maybe our county would have a little bit more money to, which go, "Help the lady that we just beat." And firefighters, our police officers, our marshals, yeah, they got a raise, but it wasn't a whole lot. It wasn't what they actually deserved for the jobs that they did. And that's my opinion, and I know we all got one and been in the light of our bits. We've all got one, and most times it stinks, but, you know, I just, I don't see the taxpayers getting the burden to pay this when we have elected officials to do the jobs. I don't see it as right. And y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne. I would like to make comment, and you and I have this discussion. We're a big county, and we have a lot of departments, a lot of boards, probably over 30 departments and boards combined. It is a lot of one person, and I think he does need help. So if this is the right thing, I don't know, but we do need to do something, and I'm for help for me to do something.
There was consent agenda item is acceptance of streets for perpetual maintenance. Burkswood at Nature Walk, Unit 1, Phase 3B, Post 4, and also Wyon Trail and Wyon Drive. Would any of the commissioners like to move that agenda item to regular discussion? Hearing none, leaving on the consent agenda. Old business, we have none. Under new business... Under new business, number one, discuss action to approve contract change order number one for Sunnyland Industrial Park Sanitary Sewer Extension to Wade Coops Company in the amount of $11,395. Ms. Ashmore.
We have, I'm really very pleased to announce that we finally have the sewer in the ground. Believe we have our first customer on the line and a couple of others who are, will be connected to it shortly. As we closed out that contract and looked at final quantity, it was a unit price contract. As we had some quantities, as you would always have on a construction project, some come in higher, some come in lower. In this case, we did not use our rock lands. We did not encounter any rock and we were under on some of our stabilization, but there were a few items that we were over. The net change in, that we are requesting is $11,395 on the contract. That is about 4% of the initial contract value.
You did a great job. I appreciate it. Y'all did good and I'm glad it's up and running now and we get more people with that.
Is there any other connections along this extension other than Wade Coops?
Oh, actually, yes, we've got one of the businesses between the connection point and Dallas Millworks has made their connection. Dallas Millworks at the upper end of the sewer line will be, I anticipate being our largest connection on the sewer line.
Any other questions, comments? Ron, you listening?
Is Ron?
Yeah, I can hear you. I can hear you have any questions.
Thank you, Orin. New business item number two, discuss action to approve the renewal of the audit contract for two additional years at $71,000 in 2008 and $73,000 in 2009. Ms. Pollard.
Good morning. Every year we go through an audit process. So at June 30, we begin to close the year. The end of August, we go through a two-week, pretty intensive review audit of what's been done for the past year. And then we, from that point, we're making, following our own thing and making changes. And as, at 180 days after the end of the year, we're required to issue financial statements. So this is all a process of getting that done. We've used nonviolence for the past, this is year number eight. Our initial contract was three years, then we had it renewed for five years. And this contract ends in 2017, but we're up for another renewal or we're up for, we have to renew that contract for this county year. The reason for bringing it to you is that we're working with, they're actually going to conduct the audit for the I B A and for the airport authority and they need to do that for the next two years. And to make that work or to see how that works, it's best if we go ahead and approve our renewal as well. So we would only do it for two years, 2018 and 2019.
Yes, the airport authority took care of theirs on Wednesday.
I knew it was on your agenda. I didn't want that to break up.
Just keeps us in line.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much, Captain. New business item number three, discuss action to approve the appointment of Commissioner Todd Poundell, Post 2, Commissioner, as Chairman Pro Tem. This is a requirement that really this skipper's going to comment on regarding our ordinance and then I'll also comment.
I've had a couple of questions about what this is and so I thought it would be helpful if I actually read the ordinance to the group so that it wasn't as confusing. It is Session 2-55.1 and it's called Chairman Pro Tem. And it says, "There is hereby created a position to be known as the Chairman Pro Tem. Which position shall act as the emergency interim successor in accordance with O C G A Section 38.3-50 Subsection F. The Chairman Pro Tem shall be designated and resume the duties of the Chairman of the Pauline County Board of Commissioners in the event the Chairman is unavailable to exercise the powers and discharge the duties of the Chairman's office until a successor is appointed or elected and qualified or until the Chairman or the successor is able to resume the exercise of the powers and discharge of the duties of the office of the Chairman. The Chairman Pro Tem shall be designated as one of the post commissioners of the Pauline County Board of Commissioners. In accordance with the nominating and confirmation procedures in place for Pauline County, the Chairman shall nominate the post commissioner selected to assume the post of Chairman Pro Tem and such nomination shall be subject to a vote and confirmation by the Pauline County Board of Commissioners." This was adopted in a resolution in 2005, so that y'all are aware, it's not a new resolution or new ordinance, it's been in place for 12 years. So essentially, the Chairman makes the nomination and you all would confirm it the same way that he would do a department head.
Bishop Poundell has watched county government for 20-plus years. He's got seniority on the board and keeps his finger on the pulse of things going on day to day. And should an emergency come up in the absence of the Chairman, I think he would be a perfect person to sit in and take charge. Any discussion or disagreement? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business item number four, discuss action to approve the Chairman's nomination of Frank Baker to the position of county administrator in this, Brian Acker's coming up from Human Resources. I wanted to say that I'm glad to be able to nominate Frank Baker. He is supremely qualified. He's a quality person. He graduated from Kennesaw State University with a degree in criminal justice and history. And then he immediately began work in county government, starting out as a policeman and just worked day to day as a policeman. And then he's got 30 years with Cobb County, with county government experience. And he's more recently got five years with Pauline County as the courts administrator. And most of the staff know him because he comes to our staff meetings and has been involved in, at points and times when he could add legal clarity to an issue. He's been interviewed by Human Resources, Brian Acker and myself and he's had conversations with all the Board of Commissioners. He's a planner, an organizer, a strategic thinker. He is a collaborator of staff and departments and certainly a team builder. He knows how to take expertise of staff and department heads and combine their ideas to achieve a successful outcome. He brings that out in his past experiences. He doesn't have any baggage, had not talked with anyone that has had something negative to say about Frank Baker. So for our county, he would bring in new blood, he's got some fresh ideas, he's goal-oriented, he's a goal setter and a person that certainly has significant accomplishments. I think Pauline County will benefit from his administrative skills and his personal leadership style. I would be working with him on a daily basis and he's certainly the type of person that wants our entire Board of Commissioners to be in front of him and be in conversation with him on a daily basis also as they, as the Board of Commissioners, as the board would see fit and need to talk with him. So as far as any questions to Brian about the process or Brian, any comments that you want to make?
I think that's pretty thorough. It's all very, procedure wise, we posted the position, we've had upwards of 15-plus applicants conduct a series of interviews. You're all well aware, this has gone on over several months. This is about something that's just transpired over the last couple of weeks. But Mr. Baker's highly qualified candidate, I think he'll do a great job. Process is basically for the Chairman to nominate and it's a board's discretion to confirm the nominations.
Any questions, discussion? Well, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we be hearing to executive session, discuss personnel.
I think he was about to say conclusion. Regular business, so let him get that out.
That's fine. For the order, that is the conclusion of the regular business, but Commissioner Colette and I have talked earlier about the ability to go into closed session here and talk about personnel. So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And I'm sorry, I was going to let you complete it. So is your motion to go into executive session to the purpose of personnel?
It is.
And I cut you off.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will go into executive session and all those in favor, say aye.
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 So we will go into executive session and should return shortly.
We will have a sit up for Ron.
I was about to ask a question.
I'll call the work session back to order and in executive session, we did not take any action and there's no motions to be made. So do I hear motion to adjourn from the work session, regular session?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.